Well, it's never really been a problem. It barely pays for itself when the COVID hit and everything exploded.
What are the COVID lessons?
The COVID lesson right now is it barely pays for itself, but it is. You'll never be a moneymaker, because the issue is if you don't own it, how do you make money? And the other is a community ask. So that's, that's.
It's not totally in the right.
It's a missed number that's really not. That's why I focus on.
Well, when I came and got involved with this whole dump, and I don't need to play it. I thought.
How old was that?
It was two thousand thirteen and fourteen, where I spoke right here at the Capitol. Somebody needed us, and I had sixty people, they were all helpers.
But did it give you money?
Well, just like this, well, I helped bring the courses up.
Yeah, so I got the volunteers to, you know, understand the whole civic attitude, you know, that it wasn't free.
Well, unfortunately, some people still think it is free, they still like to. We're trying to break that habit.
And then there's, you know, a lot of things going on, Tuesday nights, you know, and.
Yeah.
It was getting out of hand as far as.
I should have had a staff down there just so we could manage it and monitor a little bit better. Because otherwise, people would just go off for free and just rest, and stuff, because we didn't have, even have a staff. Because then it's a, it'll be an extra revenue for our staff and stuff to manage it through all the agents and curators and the bits and. It's not really perfect, because it happens for sure.
The idea of, in eighty-five thousand dollars, try to cut the grass. Well, um.
I don't remember all those details.
They were there for forty years, and they never looked at, you know, all the years they kept in.
Oh, you had, I mean, he was, I mean, he was there for like forty years.
Forty years.
So, yeah, so he got, right, he got.
Yeah, well, that was true.
And he's retired, I think, when did, when did he retire, like four?
Fifteen, fourteen or fifteen. Uh, twenty seventeen, maybe?
Two thousand seven.
He had a major retirement for a while, for five years, and then. I mean, he still works for us as a, as a seasonal grass mower.
Okay. Well, we have some flows, right? We have some flows. Well, what happened is that, what happened was that we established a grants commission, which we didn't have one until two thousand fourteen.
Fourteen.
Um, we had nobody really paying attention to that, not on public at all. And so since then, we've started funding these guys, we've been able to save a bit of grass on the surface and, and just parched themselves. You know, trimming all the trees, so they're looking like ants and everything, and so they enjoy using them, and, you know, this is coming, and all of course, it's not coming. And we just got the Jash tree department, some new moors, so they, you know, more correctly, more correctly use them and things, uh, correctly. And we assured everybody at the park, because they do know how to use them.
Hey, new used ones.
Is that what they are?
Yeah.
They're new used ones, okay.
Yeah, because we saved.
I was gonna say, those are usually the best.
Money out.
Sounds like a rental.
Those are the best people, so they do used ones, you know, kind of like the fire job.
Long as they run.
Right, new used ones.
They do a good job.
Okay, one over.
No?
Okay.
I did shout. I'm sorry, you were about to say, so then we start, starting with the staff procedures and the fact that it's here. If we need a break, if we need a break, do this, whatever it is. We need a break. Okay.
Is the brushable disposal of the engineering conversation.
Well, I remember that when we, when we created that brush site, and they were paying us to do all that stuff, and we got free molds. It didn't cost us anything, I think, a bunch originally, and I didn't correct me, it was like six or eight thousand dollars a year.
The brush site?
Yeah.
Yes.
When we first did it, we, because we had all, as the commodity stuff was so expensive, and we got all that stuff, and. And it's just morphed an entirely different direction now, that's for sure.
It has, yeah, we used the, all the work of chipping and all that used to be for free, because.
Right.
The chipping company would then take the wood chips and sell them.
Right.
You know, to, uh, power plants and that sort of thing. That market has dried up, and so now we have to pay.
Stuff would be a lot harder than that.
I don't know, it is a, it is a nice asset, but it sounds a little possessive.
More expensive?
Well, not more expensive, that's being used. And, you know, maybe it's, you know, that's how you say it, similarly, I've done before, where. People would just come in and say, oh, this is from so and so, he said, say so, you know, and some contractor, that's kind of, twenty-five trees.
The contractor was moving all those trees on wild conditions, because that's what they got back, the old trees. He was over there, had cut down dead trees, and was there. He was like, yeah, you know, we can just haul this over to the farm, and say. I feel like it's a contract. They get fun on the whole world.
Yeah, as long as it's from the homeowner, contractor, they can bring it over. I always save all that stuff in my house for vermin.
Yeah.
I stack it, I just, some of the things that last me a few years, but I stack it.
As long as you got a wood chipper.
I don't even have wood chipper, so I have a log splitter.
That's the key.
Hey, DJ, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
Uh, we'll get a, maybe you'll see. If you were. I saw. I don't seem very anxious to talk about brushing, do you? Do you agree with the most exciting comments?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it's an extensive topic.
It, well, it's more popular, also on the pocket, it'd keep you busy.
So, how are you?
I'm fine.
I almost want another. Turn this one in. Almost three quarters of the ranch, is that what you got today? I don't doubt, three quarters of the nature anymore. Yeah.
No, I'm sure you're happy. Fun things for you to look at.
They have a course, they have a course, they have a course. Apple, tree, and water ice. I know there's a good show.
Yeah, because, you know, there is a lot of swatch underneath.
We'd like to. There's always people that decide to, it's a matter of, you got great. Really?
Did it a lot more?
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah.
It was a vision.
Yeah.
You did.
Why up on it? This is like always.
I did really.
To be honest, it's. And I found out that. It's my name. I have my name. Oh, I'm very.
Oh, did it?
I'm the home contractor.
Oh, you're.
Probably greater than. Hello.
They were from something, this one, the, one cut cable.
You heard people?
No, um.
Century line?
It would be a century line cable, would be.
Something like that.
Either they cut it, or something happened, and one of the connections went, so it happened.
Is that true?
Don't know, but they didn't.
For our.
They said they, right, we haven't had phone in and out today, our internet's all been fine.
I don't know, it's a whole world, well, probably be.
I think you need to.
He just because. I think the phone calls, those, I guess they were all in person, I thought he said. He's here. Did we get any voicemails today? All of them.
Yeah.
They're all waiting, everyone's waiting. Yeah.
Yeah, it's been really frustrating, because our providers all screen the phone service, and we're totally taken down. It's not that.
Yeah, no, cable is.
Yeah.
It's into the cable connection. Okay, that's it, so why don't we start with, uh.
Fire.
Sorry, fine, sorry. Russian leaf disposal, was that?
I'll tee it up, and then I'll probably hand it over to DJ.
Okay.
Uh, so the point of discussing our, we call it Russian leaf disposal, but, um, as many people know, we provide a number of services, uh, from our, it's our Public Works folks. Uh, some of which from our Public Works facility, and some, uh, from our current brush site. Um, and so, the, what, what started the desire to have this discussion was looking at our brush site in particular, and some of the costs that we've started to incur, uh, as time has gone on. But, uh, I thought it would be best to talk more holistically about all those different services that we provide, um, for, so leaf and grass drop off, as well as, uh, issuing some of, uh, wood mulch and compost, uh, that we do. Um, and, and the reason to talk about this, one is, uh, the, the cost for brush site is no longer, uh, to get chipped is no longer free, it's been free, uh, until about two years ago. Um, and then also, at the same time, we have, uh, we have some increased demands, um, as far as usage, and for all of those services. And then, kind of free to make, the third main thing is that in our facilities that we have, which to provide those, one being the brush site, which was, you know, kind, we kind of threw that thing together, um, twenty seventeen or so. Um, using the, uh, existing, the existing site that had been used for, um, emergency response brush site, um, and then kind of turned it into a full-time brush site. And then the other thing, uh, on the facility side, is where we do the leaf and all the rest of it over our existing Public Works site. Well, come spring of twenty twenty-five, we're gonna move Public Works, the new Public Works facility does not have the space or facilities to do those kind of activities. Um, and if that building, uh, and facility gets repurposed for something else, then, uh, we need a new space, so. But, it's still early days, we don't need any decisions right now, but wanted to socialize the ideas of, do we do something different in the near term to help with the cost of the brush site? And then, uh, we'd like to start looking long-term, and what does, what does providing these services look like, both physically and, and from a resource perspective?
So maybe some history too, when we first, when it was first opened, just opened to the public, and there was no fences, there were people who dumped off just all sorts of brush and whatever, they dumped refrigerators, they dumped all sorts of stuff. And at that point, uh, commodities were, you know, people were, were kind of crazy priced, and they were for a while, and so we kind of priced it out, and said, let's fence it in, let's, uh, do it just for residents, and we charge outside contractors. And since they're coming to get rid of all of the trees and mulch and stuff for free, and they would actually give us a couple of truck loads of mulch to boot. Um, it was like a great deal, I think, uh, we, uh, in the budget, like six or a thousand dollars total.
Right.
And now with, uh, uh, you can't get rid of the mulch now, and it's not free, you got to pay to do it all, it's gonna change it over the years now, from six to eight thousand, and I think it shows here, twenty twenty, there were sixteen thousand, and we're looking at forty-three thousand. And then we have some issues that go with that, with non-resident abuses, and kind of do that, and do we want to do anything against the whole discussion, so.
Yep, and, and, and the main, you know, the main driver of those costs now is the, uh, the cost to actually bring in a contractor, um, again, a contractor that used to do it for free, because they would take a lot of the, those, uh, the chipped wood, and they were able to sell it. Um, so that's how they, they would, uh, you know, pay for the service they provided us. Um, but now, the, they don't have that market, secondary market for that material, um, so now we get charged, um, for the service of having that all chipped up. And so that's, that's the majority of where this forty-three thousand two hundred dollars comes from. Uh, there's still a small part, because we do use seasonal labor, uh, to have a seasonal tenant, uh, at the site, but that really hasn't changed that much, uh, it's, it's more this contracted service of getting the stuff chipped up. But, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, DJ, I don't wanna steal your hold.
I don't, so. You're fine, um, it is, it is the contracted service, and the timing, uh, because the contractors cannot, they're not as available to come over and chip the site up. We found that over the years, that we, we thought, okay, let's do it when the site is a quarter or a half full, to get, but it's more costly to come inside this hole. And then we're down for about a week, provide that service to the residents, so then we get phone calls, and, and all that, once it's gonna be back up, um, you know, those sort of things, so. Forty-three thousand, that's a big dollar, uh, for, for a service that initially backed, uh, I got some notes here, nineteen ninety-four is when we first started to provide the service, um, and it was going windstorm. And we needed a drop-off area for the residents to provide that, and it sort of just grew from there. Uh, the site, the existing site for the brush has got constraints, uh, because it is also the V R access. We've made it work over the years, and it holds efficiently for us, although we've got a design. Um, you know, but with Emerald Ashmore, uh, the ash trees, uh, becoming more of a, an issue in the west, west, um, area, um, we're getting more product. Uh, we're having to do more ourselves internally, haul and chipping the ash trees and looking at the red way. And Josh can attest, we, we contracted last week, within some of our park property, we have some ash trees that we're gonna have to deal with, also the one with that liability, so there's just more volume internally. Um, and we can manage it with the existing area, if we don't provide it to everybody. We bring it, you know, uh, one of the discussion points was, do we just offer it up for internal use? Um, our internal control, what we do as Public Works. And so those are all things to consider, or if it stays satisfactory. One of the things that the residents are doing, or the contractors, I should say, they're charging the resident to haul it out, and then they come, and say, well, I just did work down there, you know, Mrs. Smith's house, and this, and. And give us an address, well, they're all the younger, but they're charging that resident to haul it out, and they're done for free, so, yeah, it's, it's hard for us to.
Do you know what percent? I mean, ballpark.
It's less than twenty-five percent, uh, because last year, we really limited, uh, non-resident and non-contractor. Um, just me, two resident, and our internal and, uh, contracted staff that we have, goes in there. And it's becoming harder and harder to get rid of that product. Last year, we were being charged six dollars a cubic yard off the end of the conveyor belt, and we had, uh, forty, forty-six hundred cubic yards, and we're shipping. Um, and they used to be able to sell it down to, um, the heat, uh, boiler companies down in Minneapolis, and use it for heat, but everybody's just got so much product now that it's become harder and harder to get rid of, so. Uh, that's the brush site, um, any questions?
Well, just maybe some comments, I mean, if, you know, maybe, maybe that there's contractors that are willing to pay a fee, and that's how we start recouping the cost for it, is that?
So, we had, the, the way the fee schedule is currently set up, and the way we set it up, once we fence it off, and we start having a tenant, is, um, we do charge, um, for non-residents and contractors to dump their, it's eight bucks a.
Eight bucks a cubic yard.
It's free for residents, and one of the things we thought about exploring is, you know, the, the original intention of having this be free for residents is, is the idea that, you know, someone's gonna show up with three or four branches that fell down in their backyard, and, and we don't wanna have to charge them for that, but. You know, people, some people kind of skirt that, and they show up with a trailer, you know, of several yards of material, or have contractors, as DJ said, haul it over there, you know, and, you know, so, so one of the concepts might be, well, do we, for residents, the first cubic yard is free, and then anything beyond the first cubic yard is the same rate as we charge everybody else to help try to recuperate some. Some of the costs that go into running, running the site.
Or maybe the resident that hauling it can dump it for free, but if it's a contractor, it doesn't matter that it's coming from a residence, you know.
Unless they brought the resident with them.
Yeah, I guess, you know, yeah, but if you wanna go to that extent, you know, it might be worth it, I don't know, it just, I, it is something that I receive a lot of compliments on, you know, you need to get rid of it, and I think we all need it, and it keeps people from, you know, putting up big piles, and eventually getting tumbled lakes and all that stuff, too, so. I think it's a good service, but, you know, it doesn't need to be a profit center, but what we can do to offset this expense is something I don't know.
DJ, do you know what other cities do?
Uh, second to Diana, uh, there's a very similar operation at their public, their, uh, offshoots, their old city hall property, uh, Old Public Works, and they have a fenced off area, um, that they do. City modeling ministry actually contracts with, uh, a brush service office in Boston, and the residents can haul up there, and they keep the tally when the, when the cities get charged for that.
Does it mean that they charge a fee?
They do, um, and it's, I don't know what that fee is, um, the.
Just wondering if they're in the same boat at all, is there?
I would imagine they are, um, I've had numerous conversations with Steve Scher, their Public Works director, they, they have very similar, they had a site that wasn't controlled, uh, they fenced it in, they were handling a lot, a lot of illegal dumping happening, um, and I, I can find that answer out.
It might be helpful to look at what other municipalities around us are doing, and if they're struggling with the same.
I know Hopkins and, um, Minnetoka, um, don't charge the residents, and they have a large volume coming in, and that's across the board, that's where the leaf, grass, and, and brush also, um, we use a lot of the same contractors for hauling and shipping. And basically what they do is they sort of, I mean, just start working their way around, and then once they dump, they do the round robin again. Uh, so there's, there's only a few of them out there, uh, that contract, because it's a lot of, uh, manual labor, that's a lot of hauling and storing. Um, a lot of this goes, um, out to Watertown, there's a big, big site out there that they manage, and, um, and it gets broken down even more, and dispersed and all that, but it's a lot of trucking. Um, if we had more storage space hanging onto it, um, would be ideal, because we've turned it, we've processed it, and we get rid of the vast majority of the, the, the good wood chips. Um, wood chips coming from our brush site are, um, they put a different screening in the chipper, and it's more string, it's more dirty, it's, uh, just the overall process, but, uh, wood chips that we have here at City Hall are actually included in the chip, uh, at Public Works, excuse me, so.
And is there no ability, I mean, I see the, this, um, under three C, um, that there's no ability, um, for, for the new Public Works to house any of this? Is that because it wasn't built into the, the design, or is there an ability to look at that?
There's really not, just based on the site, with the new Public Works, so.
The base of the.
The nar, the narrow, long lot.
Yep.
Um, it's, there's just not a space to have a controlled area for a, a public interaction like that, like we do with the brush site, or do it from the current Public Works.
Well, we, and we also had a conversation with the neighbors too, who said that they were really concerned about people, if we put the brush site up in the facility, then they'd come in there twenty-four hours, and they'd drive them in out next to them, and grind, that would grind all that stuff for a full week, and we said that we would not be moving that, and there, there's been, uh, so.
We do, in that site, we do have built-in to the back, um, the commodity areas, um, that for Public Works can use, but it's not.
That's.
It's not an ide, it's not an ideal layout to, to interface with the community, and have, you know, somebody driving their personal vehicle in there to drop off some things or pick up some things, it's just not, just didn't, didn't work in layout.
Would the chips be stored there though, or the chips gonna stay separate, those are gonna stay at the brush site?
We would store some chips at our site, the primarily things that, that we would then use.
Can you, in the short term, could we look at things mitigating some of the abuse to, because it sounds like, because you're right, like, you had a contractor root stuff, and, uh, I think it was six, seven hundred dollars, right? I'm, I'm pretty sure he just dumped it over there.
Um, so. We could look at raising the fee, um, you know, when we did that a couple of years ago, that was sort of the industry average, was, you know, was a cubic yard. Um, you know, that is one option, is to look at the, look at the user fees, uh, and try to improve some of that cost.
And we'll just send contractors away.
Well, I was gonna say, like, if the, you know, because if you, your model was like, you put a few edges in the back of your vehicle, right, and it's, you know, manageable, and talking about a massive truck with like, a big hull? If you prevent that, just entirely, right, because we're not helping the residents, it's, right, I'm sure the contractors are not giving them a deal, um, so, I mean, we're just helping, you know, a business that.
And part of that is just, you know, working with our seasonals, and making sure that they are very clear on what the rules are.
What are the hours, by the way, because that might also.
Um, they vary, there's a, you have, you have to look at what's said, it varies throughout the season, starting, um, in the spring, going through just before Thanksgiving.
Because I remember thinking.
Depends on day, right?
When we were doing our work, I remember thinking like, not everybody, but like, the hours were like, I don't, don't quote me, because I'm sure I'm right, but like, three to seven, and then short hours on weekends. Well, who's the available three to five contractors, right? So like, could we marry, I know it might be harder to hire new workers, but if we married them to our resident schedules, which would be weekends, and maybe last evenings, would that be?
Well, we're running evenings are totally based on light. That's what I'm saying, they vary. That's what I'm saying, they vary because we, we don't run the site when it's dark.
Well, you gotta know, this was really intended just for, again, for residents. A couple of things falling down, it wasn't meant for somebody to say that Victoria goes and buys a wooden log and takes chops down twenty trees and then twenty trees of stuff, which is very different, right?
No, the idea is like, yeah, like, you're just doing your spring, clean up and walk around your yard, pick out ten sticks and.
That's why we're, you can just say, no contractor.
Yeah, well, that's what we, that's what we originally did it for, because I agree with Matt, we put the service in place. And I don't want to take services away from our community, these are, we're just taking a lot of positive advice from people about this too. Um, but if you can just do the deal and use part, I think that may, if we get a season of same, make, as an example, no contractor, if you gotta come yourself and there's a little bit of whatever, two square meters or whatever the, you know, the sense is, if you're doing something bigger, it means you've got a massive job that is gotta be as part of it, you're gonna have to pay for that, similar as.
You know, a few of the times that I've been out there with the seasonals, um, one of the demographic things that we have going on in Orno is we have a lot of homes because of the size of the properties, and we have these larger hand mats open trailers. And we get those boats coming in and they pack them nicely, there's two or three an evening. And then they reload because we do close, um, up until Memorial Day, we close at six o'clock. And then we're open from Memorial Day until, um, Labor Day until end of last night. And then Saturdays were eight to noon. And that's one of the biggest things that we've heard from the residents, you're, you're closing at noon, you know? Still got daylight left to, to get out there. Saturday is not necessarily the contractor. There are a few, uh, but not as.
But you almost seem to have to do it with contractors, end of volume, you know, not the volume like what you're bringing right now. Because someone could do the same volume five days in a row and just sort the whole issue. So, say you get a, I mean, you get a certain volume per year, that's what you get, you can already pay whatever it is, six dollars, eight dollars, eleven dollars.
That's still cheaper than having.
Oh, for sure, it's gonna be way cheaper, you get a certain volume that a non-resident shouldn't get to you, you know?
How do you track it then? Do you have a database?
You have to have a tracking.
Do you have a database?
Yeah, we do have a database on the computer system. Um, and that's mainly for the, the charging aspect of it. Um, what we've gotta do is go down as to residential laws, residential brush, contractor laws, contractor.
So, you already have a template, that you could just add this information to, like you're saying.
Trailer side.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't think we need to go somewhere else, I think we just, maybe just manage it differently, because it's been used differently, not always need to react. But I think keeping it, to Matt's point is, uh, is I don't think, I think there's not an alternative to that, I think we gotta keep it.
We do have a lot of work.
I think it's, yeah, we've always said we wanna provide all the services for our residents and keep it built in, whatever, what we pay and have to charge extra. And I think having a reasonable volume is a, you know, having actors to, I don't think there's a way to go.
So, the other, the other part of this is, in addition to the brush site and the other services, which we traditionally run out of the Public Works site, those have also, um, become an issue over the last couple of years with abuse. And one of the things that DJ did to help mitigate this this last fall was we, we actually took our seasonal that we had from the brush site and said, you want some extra hours? Come over, sit outside the Public Works and help monitor some of the vehicles that are coming in and out of that site. Because we do have, particularly in the fall, and we get leaf drop offs. Um, you know, the way we're configured right now, that's also where our fuel, uh, system is. Um, and so we've had incidents where, uh, late afternoon after the normal work day, we get all kinds of leaves dumped there. And then, you know, we're getting calls from the, uh, evening police officers, they can't refuel it. They can't refuel the patrol, the patrol car because, uh, there's.
You just drop it right in front of the.
It fills, it fills the whole front of the Public Works parking lot.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's in front of the gate, um, because during the daytime operations, you're not allowed, you know, public, you can't gate for the back of the building. Uh, and that's not gonna be any different from the difference, you know?
Right, but we were not even gonna have those kind of activities over there. So, that, that other part of this whole agenda item was, you know, we've got several years to worry about it, but at some point come, uh, spring, summer of twenty twenty-five, when we move public works facilities and maybe that becomes something different, where, where, if we're gonna keep offering these services, where do we do it? We've, we've tried to look at, can we do it at the brush site, the existing brush site? But the site is so oddly shaped and constrained, you can't expand it.
Yeah, but it is the best place.
And you back up to a wet one, so you can't.
It's all in one, one spot.
We love to have it in one spot.
Well, we, well, the two types is, if we get rid of the contractors.
And we keep, and we keep the volume that, that we could change.
Could you go through a year and see if you change those rules, if it improves?
Yeah, well, at that time, so I think this would maybe test you, to put it in place, uh, whatever you think the recommendation is based on listening to us to do and that you think would work, and let's see how we get through the season. And with the knowledge that it would be the best place we could to bring that, uh, the leaves and all of this stuff.
I mean, we just gotta decide that there might be some value in the site of encouraging the contractors that are at a fee to offset the cost. Which would, you know, so I'm not opposed to having the contractors there, it's just that has to be a profit center for the city. The contractors are coming, can't be cash paid or supplement. But it might prove that the best thing we have is relationship with the contractor who came a fee, because for them, it's not so much about the cost of travel time to the next, to the next site. And so, um, you know, so, so maybe having them there and having them clean that more often, we can afford to do it if they're paying a premium price to use it, and if they don't, we're just not cleaning it up as much.
We've been on average once a year, um, because what happens on a brush site, they dump and we have to go out and push and stack it, uh, make room for the next, not everybody knows how to back up a trailer.
No.
Unfortunately, you get one that's in there crooked and then that backs everybody else.
Or they just stack into the middle and just.
Yep, drop off. So, um, one is pushing file and, and making the room. And we have the room, we can, we can store upwards of one year's worth of W. And we've been fortunate the last couple of years to be opening stores. Um, so we have been had a lot of, you know, storm related debris happening, you know, haul out there.
And we can always, you know, if we do have a storm come, so we can lift that for a certain amount and provide service to everybody trying to clean up their yard.
Yeah, I'd still like to know what other, other cities do, just as information going forward. Do you have any, what is your best guess to account for that number almost tripling in two, two, three years?
It's been the amount that we've had dumped out there, um, that had been chipped out, um, plus the cost. One, we were at, at zero and then it went up to three or four dollars a cubic yard. This last time it was six dollars a cubic yard. And I've heard this winter now, it's gonna be upwards of eight to ten dollars a cubic yard. And that's just for the chipping, that doesn't include mobilization for them to come out of that site. So.
And then whatever money we collected, is that offset by this? I mean, my.
It's not that large.
Yeah, we don't, we don't collect very much.
Yeah, we don't, we don't collect enough, yeah, it's, it's under, it's under ten dollars, right? It pays for part of the seasonal employees to be out there.
In-house chipper, out-of-your-head?
Um, there's not, I'm just asking, I'm asking.
Yeah, I got the data. Dangerous.
This, this is not, this is not, these are not the chippers like, you know, you see contractors all around the neighborhood. This is the giant thing that comes on semi.
So, you're saying no?
This would be, this is the one that swallows a car and, and spits it out.
It's cool wash, but it's not something we would ever want to do.
Well, no, no, you just described, no, what would you say? If you charge a forty, forty grand a year, I was like, well, maybe there, we can bring it out, so. We'll try.
All right. So, whatever we do, we'll make sure it gets a public.
Same thing.
Whatever we, whatever changes, we should advertise that.
No, absolutely, we're looking at, uh, you know, as we get ready for the new season, begin adjusting our hours and do some other things to get one.
Because if you wanna make it residential, you deal with the hours, right? You know, maybe it's only Thursday, Friday, Saturday, that's all.
And then, uh, you know, that's the other way, if we wanna go full residential.
Now, talking with the seasonal tenants, um, there are a couple of days throughout the week that there's not many people that, uh, drop off. And there's been a lot of, um, suggestions to extend the hours on Saturday to like two o'clock. Uh, that gives them one more turnaround of, of brush removal versus they have to load from Friday night to they bring out first thing at five. They go home, they reload, like one more time, two or three times, they, they get back up to that. Just, we'd be able to adjust that within the budget already, um, not having it open, let's say on a Tuesday night or Wednesday night and shift those hours through the Saturday, so.
And then are you suggesting to buy the vacant lot next to the fire department and use that as a?
That is one of the, uh, options that we were considering. So, on your third or fourth page and our, um, where the donation garden is currently, is one of the areas that Ann and I were bouncing off of each other. If we were to move both operations, the brush site and leaf and, and composting, um, back in the, the existing fire station, um, was one of the considerations. So, the other photos you see here, um, on the last page are existing operation in a different site. The middle photo is what we were referencing earlier with the leaves. Um, you got a good depiction of a vehicle on a trailer there and partly out in the parking area, but not all the way. We've had a funny one when we come in that we can't park back, excuse me, back into the parking stalls, um, for employee parking.
Well, I think we should get rid of that as soon as possible.
What's that?
Coming there to get woodchips.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, it just, it doesn't make sense with the city vehicles and activity.
Kind of, kind of dangerous.
It's kind of a dark, secret spot back there. And one thing about the brush site now is we're very exposed. Like, when, when you go by there, there's no hiding.
There's no hiding, sure.
And we do have security cameras up and, and that sort of thing.
They're not stopping your piles or?
No, it's not, uh, because we still have illegal dumping in, in the after hours where they dump it right in front of the gates and they don't, that sort of thing.
We had to handle a couple of contractors and see the logo on the side of their car and, oh, I'm gonna say. Come back.
They come with a logo.
Yep, and it's helpful, so.
Thank you for making it easy, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, no, um, since your, your comment helps me is, for a station, uh, you see the two photos, um, is one of the sites that is a possibility if down the road, um, that is a potential option, but it's, it comes with its pros and cons also there. So, but if it's an existential, it would be.
We can solve those, like, the convenience of the issues we have, kind of, so that can play a role.
Play a role personally. Okay.
So, reduce the size and get it all over in one spot?
Yeah, that would be, that would be the goal. Okay, I'm gonna hold off on number two, I've got an item that has come to my attention that I'd like to talk about real quick. You know, when we're, when we are representatives, we are representatives of the city, when we're meetings, without officials, we are the representative of the city. I think everybody recognizes that. It's come to my attention, um, I, uh, there's an organization called North Chris Hennepin's Mayor's Association. And I am the ma, I am a member of all mayor's associations. And I know Councilmember Benson, uh, since January has been going there without my approval, um, since I'm the only member. And I know in these meetings that, um, that's been concerning that, uh, Councilmember Benson has been degradating me in these meetings to the other mayors, who also had a representative from the Met Council there and had become a commissioner. And I'm concerned about what I've heard about in that meeting, conspiring with the other mayors, uh, that you're not invited to this meeting to begin with about how you can potentially dig up dirt on council members at Orno, uh, suggesting to the head of the county commissioner to not give us the grant that we're looking for for the pickleball hockey ring court. And I have found that to be perplexing. Um, and I'd like to understand what made you think you could go to those meetings in that place when I'm a member? And how, and then all that inappropriate behavior, at least from my perspective, is inappropriate. Uh, because if that is true from the people that have called me, that were in that meeting, um, I would think that you'd rather organize a policy, be it staff, undermining the staff, undermining the council, undermining meetings, and then talking negatively to other elected officials that we have to deal with all the time, being the Met Council and having issues.
Well, I'll start with, um, saying that this isn't on the work session agenda, so, I'm not sure, sorry, if this is something we're gonna address now because it's not on the agenda.
Are you asking what can be added to the agenda?
Correct, because otherwise, you know, I can talk about it in my council report, seeing that we have other business to attend to.
Well, I was trying to get to an adequate council to, to.
No, I'm happy to do it, to talk about this, and I'm prepared.
I was only gonna add it now and get some answers.
So, on a regularly scheduled interwork session of council meeting, you can, uh, adjust the agenda if the council's willing.
My, I'd be more than happy to talk all about this, I'd prefer to do it in the regular meeting just because.
I'm open hearing about it now.
I can do, I, well, I'll do both in that case, because it's on my mayor council report to talk about this tonight. And I also, out of respect for staff, having set the meeting agenda, um, I'm happy to address this with a couple of sentences, but I really don't wanna take our work time in this session, given that we've only got till six o'clock to work through all these other agenda items with number two. So, I'll address this quickly and then I'm happy to talk about it in my council report. And again, if this is something that's been an issue of concern, that's been known about, I'd rather not do kind of a hijack of the.
Well, you can talk about it or keep, keep loading on something else.
And I would ask that, out of respect for everybody here in the room, that you not speak to me that way.
Well, you know what, what I've heard in this meeting that came out of your person is very, very inappropriate from my perspective and very concerning for this council, for the staff that you undermine, um, conspiring with other mayors in a meeting that you're not even supposed to be at, but how you can dig up dirt on the council more, I mean, that's, doesn't sound very inappropriate to me.
So, what I'll say to address this issue, and again, um, I'm gonna talk about this in my mayor council report, but just to address this now and then we can talk about it at the meeting as well, when there's more of the public here, because I think that is important. I received an invitation, um, from other mayors who are part of this Western Hennepin County League of Municipalities. It's not, it's not, the M doesn't stand for mayor, it stands for municipalities. And I was invited, um, by several of the other people in the group, um, because, um, Orno had maybe attended, or I guess a representative from our city had maybe attended a few of those in years past and had not attended in quite a number of years. So, I was invited to attend and I did. And I was, and I was very excited to talk about this tonight, um, and I'll talk about this again, that the newly elected Hennepin County Sheriff, Dawn Witt, um, was supposed to be the speaker last week at this meeting. Unfortunately, she had businesses to handle and she couldn't. So, as I talked about during campaigning and when I first got on this council, it's my impression that the way to, um, govern and the way to be most effective as a city leader is to have relationships with the surrounding communities, whether it be Corcoran, Loretto, Dinah, Minatrista, all of these western cities. And in the absence of an interest of any one of the council members for the last four or five years of attending this meeting, I was approached to be a part of it, to share ideas, to give and offer support. What I will say is that I'm not in control of what other people say any more than anyone else in this room is, about the person on either side of them. So, given that nobody besides me was at the meeting, um, I think it's, it's wrong to assume, um, that, that my words were somehow denigrating. What I do do is speak factually about some of the challenges in the city and, and the challenges that I have as a council member in the city. And that's part of the deal, we are coming together with other professionals to give and receive support. So, I was planning on talking about that today to the mayor council, and I'd like to, but again, out of respect for the, the staff who has set the agenda, I think, um, it would be my preference anyway that we.
Well, I'd like to get more answers about why you talk inappropriately about degrading me specifically and then degrading the council, telling somebody from the head of the county commissioner, that we deal with all the time, to tell them not to give us the grant, you're undermining our parks commission, you're undermining our staff. I, I, I heard people in that meeting that called me during the meeting while you were there, telling me what you were saying and it was very inappropriate. And I don't understand why you think that's okay.
I don't feel, again, and again, my impression is if we wanna have an agenda item about this issue, it would be my preference that we set an agenda item and time to address it.
About your inappropriate behavior?
I, so I'm done for now. You can continue to talk, but I'm not gonna address this.
Well, I think, I think the bigger issue here is, is, you know, if you're representing the city. You know, what channels you go through to introduce yourself into a meeting. You know, I don't know if staff was aware that you was attending this meeting. Um, but I find it inappropriate at, at the least from just the sheer transparency of letting everyone know that you're doing it on our behalf. I think that's really inappropriate. You know, you run on the platform being transparent and this is, this is far from being transparent. And I, I don't know, I've been on this for over four years and I've never done something like that without, you know, consulting staff or, uh, the council about if someone's not going. I would like to again, I don't know what.
Sure. No, that's, that makes perfect sense. And again, this is why I have all my notes written up here today to address this during mayor council. And again, I'd offer that this was an invitation extended to me because the city of Orno has had no representation in, I don't know.
Receiving invitations isn't the problem. It's what do you do with them and how do you communicate with the other members of the council and staff about the decisions that you ran?
That's, that's a good point, a really good point. And I think that, um, again, my intention is to, um, open up opportunities within this council to share and receive and work with other organizations, other cities. So I think it's a really good point. And I think it's certainly, again, the invitation was extended to me because it has not been taken up by other members of the council. If that's something that we as a council wanna talk about, certainly I'm open to it. The idea is to engage actively with other cities and communities. So that's really good.
I don't have any problem with that. The issue is I'm, I'm actually a member of that organization. So if you're going and representing Orno, if, if, uh, from a transparency standpoint, you need to say something. But I still think based on what you had said at that meeting, the staff is doing apology, council is doing apology, and I am doing apology. And if you don't wanna do that, then that's how we'll talk about it. Council, we'll, we'll talk about it more all the time. But I think that's very inappropriate, the, the behavior that you assumed at that meeting.
I get what you're saying.
I agree.
And again, out of respect for staff.
Well, you didn't have a lot of respect for the mayor of the meeting when you undermined him as well as Josh, your life.
I think it's time to move on because again, um, we can set another agenda time. I simply think it's, we have a lot more stuff to continue. And, and I would also offer that, um, these are things, the next item anyway, are things that I'm very excited to talk about as a member of the city council. I'm going to take, I'm going to word all these things, so. I mean, my.
I don't know what I should add here, so we'll move on for now.
Soren?
Yep, um, so yeah, Soren's my backup. The intent of this council item was, there's been some questions, not only from, uh, our newest council members, but other council members have, have reached out to me or asked some questions in the past several weeks on some different processes and, and how we do things, uh, in, in Orno. And so I thought we could, uh, cover some of these things at a high level. Obviously, we have limited time today, but if there, as we go through these kind of at a high level, if there are any that we would like to dig into, we're happy to bring those back in a future, uh, work session where we can, where we can do anything that I. So, uh, I gave each of you at your seat a, a set of slides up there. I'm gonna go through, um, to. Which are just some bullet points and I would say that, uh, a lot of these slides I took from our, um, we do an in, in brief for new council members whenever they come in. And so, uh, I took these from our in brief when, uh, Melissa joined us, um, and we, we in briefed her. So, um, first slide, uh, talks about the city administrator, city council relationship. A little chart there I stole from a League of Minnesota Cities presentation, but, you know, in general, the idea and what the city administrator does in the city, um, count of staff is kind of goes hand in hand. So, um, you know, two bullet points there. City council is here to set, uh, policy direction, uh, and, and to direct, uh, as a director of, uh, representative of the community. The city administrator and the staff, we're here to provide professional expertise and then, you know, in my role, lead and manage, uh, the organization. And there's lots of overlaps, obviously, we all know how that works, but that's kind of the general principle of, of how things go. Um, the next slide there talks about staff, council staff interactions, and I wanted to talk about this a little bit. It is very important that we have interaction between the council and the staff, particularly the senior staff. So we don't wanna do anything, uh, that, uh, that puts that into question. However, there are some basic, you know, ground rules of how we try to do that. You know, the first is that at the staff, um, we take, I take direction from the city council as a body. So the majority of the five of you, that's where I get my direction. Doesn't come from an individual council member, it has to come from the body as a whole. Um, and then there's a simple chain of command, so to speak, um, from me then to the department heads and the department heads down to their particular, uh, folks in their departments. But that said, regular interaction has to happen, uh, between us. And so, you know, the, the way that's, that we have, that I've provided some guidance to the department heads and the way I would like to try to manage our, our relationship is that it is quite common and expected and we encourage, you know, questions come up on council actions, um, by all means. Uh, I talked to a couple of you this morning about tonight's agenda. So that is normal, that is okay. We expect that. Whether it be to me or to one of the department heads, or even, you know, in some cases directly to one of the planners who might have an action on that night's agenda, uh, that you want some additional information. That's, that's how I ask some questions, what have you, trying to provide direction directly to the staff. Uh, that's not okay. Uh, that, that has to come through me and generally I'm looking for consensus from the council before we start doing any of those kind of things. So I would expect that direction to come in meetings like this or in a council meeting. And to initiate some things, sometimes it's just consensus. I don't need a council vote. I just need to know that that's kind of how the body would like us to spend our, our staff time. And then that can then lead on to more formal things later on. And then the final little sub bullet I put on there is, you know, non-council action type queries, um, those are also fairly normal. So interactions between the senior staff and the, and the council, that's fairly normal. And I didn't invent this. I got it from some of my predecessors, but I have, I call it the fifteen minute rule. So if one of you calls up one of the department heads and has some questions or, or what have you, if it's something they can answer in fifteen minutes or less, their direction is go ahead, make that happen, answer those questions. Or if it's something that we would information or services we would provide to any member of the community, obviously, we're gonna do that as well. If it's something that's gonna take them more than fifteen minutes, something we haven't already put together or, or what have you. Um, then their, their, their direction is to come to me and then I will try to work with the members of council to figure out what, uh, what the next steps on, on that might be. Does that make kind of sense? So I've always used the fifteen minute rule, so that, you know, routine things can happen routinely, um, but anything going on, I can, can get controlled up. Uh, the rest of the bullets I had on this particular slide, you know, don't jump to conclusions regarding citizen feedback and the communication is key. Again, the bottom one, communication is key. We don't, we don't want surprises on the staff side and you guys don't want surprises on your side. Um, so again, we encourage that interaction back and forth. Finally, just the, the next slide on staff, council staff interactions, um, is, uh, we, we haven't really had an issue with this, but I always like to just say, you know, respect goes both ways. We try to be respectful of, uh, you and your elected position, just as we are respectful of our citizens and we expect the staff to be treated with the respect due to, as human beings. But also I would like to make sure that, uh, re, reemphasize, there is a power dynamic and that puts staff in a vulnerable position, particularly when it comes to our elected officials. Our job as staff is to provide you professional recommendations, not political recommendations. Um, and so we, we will, and, you know, I charge the department heads to always give you the best information they can, even though we may sometimes know it's not what you wanna hear. And it may even not be the decision you're gonna take. Uh, we're still gonna do our best to do that, so we always ask, don't, you know, please don't attack the messenger. We're just trying to give you the best advice that we can. And then that last bullet, um, you know, there's, uh, sometimes, uh, there's some friction between our elected officials at various times in, in our history. Um, and, you know, we do our utmost to never take sides of staff. Uh, we're, again, we're here to provide professional, but not political advice. And, you know, that is another thing where, you know, sometimes you can get the feeling that we're, we're, people are digging for information, not for the duties, uh, that, that they're elected for, but maybe because they, they wanna, they wanna take a, take a political stance one way or the other, uh, against other members of the council. And we do our utmost to stay out of that. Understand, happens, but it's not what we're about. And then finally, again, just to reiterate, the direction we give is from the majority, not from the individual. That was, um, that one. The next one I had real quick was agenda setting. Uh, I tried to throw in a slide there, just kind of the nor- the normal process. So I would say, you know, I've had this question from multiple people in the last couple of weeks. You know, agenda setting normally, like ninety, ninety, ninety-five percent of the agenda items that arrive on a council agenda are staff driven. And they're not staff driven because we make them up as staff. They're staff driven because we're following the various procedures and policies or code that's out there or statute on how we move things along. The, you know, from, from planning and zoning type items to procurement type items. Um, you know, they all have certain rules and how they're supposed to flow and what, and, you know, we are coming to the council because you are the ones who have the authority to say yes or no on many of those items. Uh, so I, I laid out the, the, the basis there and, and most of you who've been around know that, you know, our city clerk, uh, I, our ordinance is the one who proposes an agenda, uh, at the beginning of every meeting. Um, and so that's, that's where that starts. I will tell you, I know sometimes we get questions about timeliness. So our normal process on, for council meeting starts on the Tuesday before. You know, some of those processes start well before, but as far as trying to set that agenda, we started on Tuesday morning in our department head meeting where all the department heads kind of put out there, these are the things we think we have for next Monday. The clerk drafts that agenda. You normally will see that sometime on Wednesday, um, that, hey, these are the, the draft agenda items that we think we have. Those staff members are trying to finalize those agenda items, sometimes trying to pull the last thing from maybe an applicant, one of the variants or, you know, a, a contractor to give us their last quote that we need to follow up on our procurement. All those council items come and are submitted, uh, by you on Thursday, for the most part, for the exceptions. Um, and then, um, the city clerk and I spend Thursday afternoon reviewing all those council items, uh, for completeness, correctness, all that kind of good stuff. And then normally, Anna's trying to get that agenda and all those reporting documents up to you on, on Friday. And the one thing I wanted to make sure everybody understands, because it was part of the question I had, is, you know, although the clerk prepares a draft agenda, you all set the agenda. And that's the first thing you do in the council meeting. And we talked, uh, I just wanna talk a minute about how you add something or. You guys are setting that agenda at the very beginning of the meeting. So that's when it takes the majority to just say, yeah, these are the things we're gonna talk about tonight. In general, we don't see a lot of changes at that point. Sometimes, uh, usually things are, are, are taken away because maybe in the interim being the time that a piece of information is still missing or an applicant pulls their application. Normally things aren't added, but sometimes they can be. But it's supposed to be set at the beginning of the meeting, not the middle of the meeting. Correct me if I'm, if I missed anything. And then at the bottom of the slide, it talks about kind of agenda setting. So the other part, as I tried to mention before, is for some of the council-driven things, things that we see maybe in a work session to start with or even come back to a council. You know, we can take that anytime. Normally I'll see it pop up during mayor council report or I'll see it pop up in these, these work sessions where, oh, there's an interest in a topic in the future. And the way we would like to do those is that comes out, like, you know, say it happens in the mayor council, I look, do I see three, at least three heads nodding that that's something that you wanna talk about and spend staff time on? Then we'll start preparing something preliminarily. We'll bring it to you in a work session and then you'll provide some more guidance. And then, you know, it would come to a, a regular meeting for some kind of overreaction or those kinds of things. Any, any questions on that? I'm trying, I'm trying to fly through these because it's.
Well, I have the ability during whatever period of time if somebody wants to make a motion to pass something and the majority says yes. We wanna do that. We have that ability to do that.
That, I think that can happen. The challenge that you have when that happens, say, uh, and it has happened in the past, is that we, we lose, um, we lose credibility with the public because it was never that you were talking about something that wasn't on the published agenda or wasn't on the agreed agenda at the beginning of the meeting. So I think legally, yes, we can do that, but as far as best practice, we only kind of say, we shouldn't do that. Again, sometimes we'll have, like, yeah, the, the mayor council vote, hey, we wanna do, we want staff to look at this and then, yeah, you take a vote, you say, go do that. But that, that's different than, you know, making a major decision about a procurement or, uh, a variance or, you know, some other type of action. I'm sure I can add well, but.
Oh, it's a good idea.
So in other words, once you set the meeting agenda for that night, that's really what should be followed. It shouldn't be that something comes up that would need a vote that isn't on that set of.
Oh, that's not.
There's a custom and norm that's we try and handle by setting the agenda. Can you amend the agenda later on? The answer is yes. By the jury votes, by the jury vote.
Is that something that happens often?
I don't think it happens often. It can happen.
It does not, it does not happen often here, but it has happened.
Yep.
Uh, next, uh, subject was, uh, council meeting procedure. Um, talk about the agenda being provided at the beginning of the meeting. Um, and just to reiterate, the mayor is the presiding officer of the meeting. The mayor runs the meeting. Um, and their charges are facilitate discussion and reserve order. If you look at the mayor's handbook, I believe there's so cities. We, as the city of Orno and it states in our code, we use Robert's Rules to guide our proceedings. That said, we don't, we are not slaves, we are not traditionally slaves to Robert's Rules of Order and parliamentary procedures. But, um, we just follow them as a general guideline and that's part of why we have a civic attorney sitting in our meeting. If we start deviating too far left or right from how those are supposed to go with the storm.
And Robert's Rules are really a legislative tool, not a council member tool. So there's a lot of nuances that are all legislates reported to. So it's a general guidelines tool.
Yeah, I, 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 I dislike Robert's Rules as a mechanism for councils. It's really meant for a larger body. You'll notice that we really do a deep dive on it. There's a lot of procedural stuff in it that we'll never do, thankfully, so. Long as we can keep it simple, you know, in terms of motion, a second, the majority of governance. And what I would tell you when I'm asked about procedural items is, um, I don't include Robert's Rules as a way for, say, a minority to overturn and not allow the majority to do what they want. We don't have committees or letting things, other committees or things like this. The idea is there's five of you, you get together. Um, we're here to, you know, to actually what's the majority wants on that. Sometimes you can get, you know, kind of amend the motion and things like that. We can work through those things. One of the things we stripped and read Robert's Rules, what it would decide, what the indicators we should really make in motion, second, depending on the base and merits of the motion. I encourage councils to not make that motion right away. We kind of discuss the item, we come with a consensus. It's a lot easier for, for taking notes and then just track what's going on and not even the, the motion itself, it's just a lot tighter. So I, I encourage you to come to sort of a consensus, which is not considered Robert's Rules, kind of, I think it's better.
Um, a final point on the meeting procedure, because I've just had this question. Uh, citizen input, so, um, that is managed by the presiding officer, so that is the mayor. So in, so public input is not a requirement for the average normal council meeting and normal council items. Um, it has been a practice, a norm for this council, but it does not require a legislative requirement that we have public input for every council item. When we have a public hearing, when you have a public hearing, public comment is a requirement. So there's a little bit of a difference and a nuance. The way we've been doing it is we've kind of been treating everything the same, but just so you know that, I know I've had that question, I think, two or three times, is, is public input required? No, it's not required.
And we don't have a lot of public hearings at the council. We just have variants, we have items up for, for both, none of them are public hearings. So we're just doing that as a courtesy.
Um, the final one that I wanted to throw real quick, meeting minutes. Uh, had that question a couple of times in the last few weeks. Um, meeting minutes are taken for each council meeting. Uh, at the bottom of the slide there, I have from, uh, from the League of Minnesota Cities, I went through and pulled what are required in meeting minutes. Meeting minutes are not intended to be a verbatim. It's not a deposition. Uh, it's not a court. it's not a court, uh, recording. It is a summary of what has transpired at, at that meeting. Our council meeting minutes have traditionally been, um, more thorough, uh, than they necessarily need to be. They've always kind of, they kind of lean that way, um, which is fine, but they've never really strayed to being a verbatim recording. We have audio recordings and video recordings for the meeting, um, if anybody ever wants, a member of the public wants to see exactly what was said. What the meeting minutes are supposed to do is talk about who was there, what was talked about, and what the votes were. Um, and, um, so that's, that's kind of the bare minimums of what they're supposed to be. We, we can, we use a contracted service who sits and watches our video and listens to our, uh, audio and transcribes something. Those are submitted, the clerk gets copies of those. We check them for thoroughness, uh, or sorry, for completeness and make sure that, uh, you know, the, all the votes that were taken at the previous meeting are recorded and those kind of things. We do not, as a staff, we do not review those minutes, uh, word by word, have maybe an audio recording to make sure that they say, we don't, we don't do that. At the end of the day, those meeting minutes are yours as a council and you're the ones who are going to approve them at the following meeting. So, if there are certain things that you think have been left out or are factually inaccurate, uh, we're, we are part, you know, largely dependent on you to let us know that. Um, we're just, we are not committing that level of staff time to do some kind of deeper reading on that. So.
All right. We've got a couple of minutes before council, so.
I'm sorry, Ron.
Can't see the camera.
Welcome, everybody. Everybody can have a seat. It would be great. Welcome to the, uh, Monday, February 13th, 2003.